Hello, my name is Reverend Michelle Ellison. And first I want to offer my condolences to Councilman Lavelle. Your grandfather was truly a great man and very admirable in our community. I'm here to speak about the Citizens Police Review Board. And I have two pieces I'd like to say about what's going on. I think we need to make sure that things are done procedurally correct to ensure that justice does prevail and that there doesn't seem to be any type of conflict of interest. One thing, there are two procedural pieces I wanted to say. First about the board members. If the council could move in an expedient way to handle this so that the community feels that it is definitely protected and that the police department and our community truly are working together but also are not having a conflict of interest and that we can make sure that we are protected with safety and protection as we should be. The second thing is, is while the court piece is going on that's outside of what we would normally do with the Citizens Review Board, I would hope that the council would think about standardizing the amount, the type of information that is available to the Citizens Police Review Board. So we don't have to go through this again, we don't have to get people back in court, know that, but it will be a standardized, what information should always be available to know that justice prevails. I think that we really want to root out police misconduct. We want this to be the most livable city where we root out police misconduct as quickly as possible. And so I'm hoping that we will move in that direction so that citizens or visitors are not brutalized by the police department or those who involve the law enforcement in this community. And also that we will make sure that we have no erroneous police reports. I think that we will in the future hopefully have a chance to get a carbon copy of the police report once it's done and people won't have to pay for it later. And that kind of parameter can be set so that people won't have to worry about people coming together to conclude a story, to put things together that maybe didn't happen. And it will remove the police department and its officers from having the pressure to do that and will ensure that people have a just report. Finally, I would hope at some point in the future that the Citizens Police Review Board and the council were considered being directly funded by the Justice Department rather than going through the police department for their funding. I think that will also help to eliminate a conflict of interest as well and really promote justice and safety and protection for our citizens. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. You know, there's a lot of people here that are speaking about the police review. I want every citizen and council person to look at me on July the night of this year. My son would have been 44 years old. And when I speak about a grieving mother, and I mean I'm still grieving, when I speak about it and I hear what's happening with the police review, it hurts my heart. You know why? Let me tell you why. If nothing else, with the police review board, we can question. Do you understand? Question. We might not get any results. They might not give us papers. They might not do a lot of things, but we can question. When my son died because he got at the hands of some looking for police and there's no police review, it's the same as he was not even born. I hadn't know what I could turn to. But here, here, we have the police review. It don't have the teeth that it should and we as a people could come together and make it stronger. But at least we have something. And the four of you that would not honor and pick anybody for the thing is the reason. Now this one time I'm gonna take up for the mayor. Mayor, if they didn't do what they were supposed to do and you're doing what you think is right, you keep on doing it. But I do want to say that I, directly to you, the mayor, because Heather won't take a message if I tell her, I'm gonna tell you. I want to volunteer to be one of those people on the police review. I also want to volunteer Les Ludwig to be on the police review. I want to volunteer Harry Lyler to be on the police review. An honorary member, Rick, I mean Dave Adams. Now that's four people. You only need one more. You can put your brother in if you want. But we've got four people that I say that we will fight for what's right. Mr. Burgess, when you were talking about with a young boy, how you was gonna put these laws in and you want this and that, I myself said, no, he's wrong. Let the process go through. Then if nothing happens, then try. But I'm telling you, citizens, we have to have some way to police the police that cannot police themselves, just like city council can't police themselves. Because if you was, four years would have put up people's names. You didn't do it, now you're trying to blame the mayor. But the mayor, if he don't call Harry, Yvonne, and Les, and so on, we can blame him then because we can say he's not fair. No, I'm not kidding with that part. But I'm serious about the police review. We must be able to question. That's all. If we can question, put the question out.
Next speaker, please.
I'm also the Green Party nominee for the US Senate. My condolences, Councilman Lavelle. My wife and I kept our kids' college money in that bank for a long time because we thought your grandfather did some great work for the citizens of this city. And so my condolences for that. You know, in my lifetime, there was a shameful governmental episode called Watergate. Yes, I'm that old that I remember that well. In which a particularly evil president, no, not George Bush, but Richard Nixon, injured and authorized a break-in of Democratic Party officers. It wasn't long before all the facts began to leak out and the special prosecutor was, named Archibald Cox, was appointed to investigate. When Cox became too honorable and actually attempted to do the job and pursue the truth, he was fired by Richard Nixon. That brought about a national outrage. There was no question he had the legal right to do it, but there was a question of moral outrage. He didn't have the moral right to do that to an individual who was obviously pursuing the truth and seeking justice. I think that today, US council members face a similar moment in which their moral compass and moral courage is being tested. We have a mayor who, in my opinion, without a doubt, is intent on hijacking the Citizens Police Review Board in order to disrupt, obstruct, and possibly completely derail two of the most important instances of police brutality, police misconduct, namely the G-20 and Jordan Miles. Make no mistake, if he succeeds, and if you back him, the message to our community, I think will be quite clear, that justice will in fact be derailed in this city. This is your chance to shine as council members. It's your chance to display some moral courage. It's your chance to state the legal procedures be damned, whether or not he has a legal right to do that, that you're not gonna let that happen. That this council will uphold some great and traditional American values that many of us hold so dear and have celebrated in the last few days of truth, freedom, equality, and last of all, the pursuit of justice for all. I urge you to vote no, and I urge you to postpone this, and I urge you to keep the board intact until these investigations are complete. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Stamey. I have lived in the city of Pittsburgh, in the Friendship Area, for 34 years and have lived in the city for 56 years. And this is my opinion. Pittsburghers, it is my observation and opinion that you are all being scammed and lied to about the real estate frauds on the North Shore Developments, the Mon Valley Tour Road, the haste to destroy the Civic Arena, as well as subsidized empty buildings in Lawrenceville and downtown, falsely blaming financial problems of the city on the bottomless pit known as the Pension Fund, being used as a reward system for high-paying jobs for family and friends. I think these greedy and desperate decisions are destroying the city we all want to live in and using public hysteria for financial gain at the expense of Pittsburghers who call this place our home. The shale fracturing technology to crack the earth's crust involves shooting steam and 666 chemicals, toxic chemicals, under pressure and into the water aquifer that gives us life. All of Pennsylvania could become nothing more than a toxic waste dump within a year. Destroying the precious special history of Pittsburgh's past will reduce the town to gambling casinos and sports arenas, all to be a haven for organized crime. Atlantic City went this way, from a vacation paradise to fixed sports betting gambling casinos where people lose their dreams, gun stores, liquor stores, pawn shops, and prostitutes. I guess that's maybe what the mayor wants this town to be. Remember, if you add up all the numbers in the roulette wheel, you also get 666. When no one speaks out or fights for what is right, evil takes over very quickly and quietly. In my opinion, our mayor is for sale. Our governor is for sale. Our county officials are for sale. Our parking authority is obviously for sale. Our laws here don't apply to all of us, so our laws are for sale. Americans' freedoms of speech and inhaling the right to disagree and voice that opinion without being beaten and tortured by our own police force ordered by our mayor is also for sale. The Public Utility Commission seems to be for sale to the oil companies. PennDOT was sold to the GM Bus Division when they scrapped the streetcars. Our city was 866,000 people when the Beatles played their first public concert in the Civic Arena. Now all have fled except for 243,000 of us diehard Pittsburghers. Call and write your city councilman. Everyone who hears me, please stop this. Try and stop the mayor from knocking down the Civic Arena. Write your congressman. Write your local representatives. Write the mayor even though he will probably throw it in the garbage. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Paul O'Hanlon. I live at 5942 Phillips Avenue in Squirrel Hill. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the issue of the civilian, police civilian review board. I came this morning because I thought it was critical that, in my small way, I could demonstrate this is not a black-white issue. I'm pleasantly surprised to see so many of my white, fellow white residents here to support the civilian review board. It's very clear that the black community is very supportive of the civilian, police civilian review board. I think that it's critical that we continue to answer the question, whom? Protect and serve whom? And I think that without the civilian review board, to protect and to serve doesn't answer the question, well, whom? Who are we protecting and who are we serving? I think the police do a great job. I think they do an important job. I think that it's critical that we constantly remind all of us that they're here to protect and serve us. And sometimes, as we interact with the police, it isn't always clear. It certainly wasn't clear who they were protecting and serving during the G-20. I think that the questions that the council needs to address include things like, well, what about replacing members of the civilian review board during a very complicated and lengthy investigation? Does it make sense to kind of replace a jury mid-trial? Does it make sense to replace a civilian review board with individuals that don't have broad community support? I think that to not proceed in a careful way is really to call the whole issue of the legitimacy of the civilian review board into question. And I think that that's far, far, far too critical a thing to do rightly. We've had too many incidents, I think, in our city that have made relations between the different ethnic groups of our city contentious and not a shared experience of this city being free and open to all. So I think it's critical that we do what we can to make it clear that we want this city to be a city that works and welcomes everyone and that truly everybody here is included in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Good morning, friends. My name is Reverend Alma Faith Crawford, and I'm Associate Minister at First Unitarian Church in Shadyside, 605 Morewood Avenue. I'm here because I represent a congregation that is largely characterized by its relationship between Carnegie Mellon University and University of Pittsburgh. Our membership lives primarily in Pointe Breeze, Squirrel Hill, Shadyside, Oakland. They are not typically the people that are assumed to have an adversarial relationship with the police, and they do, though. Their passion, the passion that I share as their minister, is one for democracy. Democracy requires not only that things are carried out in a just way, but that they are accountable and visible. It has been said by one wiser than I that sunshine is the best disinfectant. It protects all who participate in democratic processes, that how things happen are visible and understandable, that the processes are explicit and not, there are no quality of secretiveness or collusion or colonialism. Those appearances undermine all of us who want to participate in a democratic Pittsburgh. The other capacity in which I stand here is as a mother with a 10-year-old present here. This is her first opportunity to observe what democracy, what democratic government looks like. This is what it looks like, Elizabeth. Our elected officials listen to us. They listen respectfully, just as we support them in their efforts to faithfully carry out their oath of office. In order for our police to function and have all of the respect that they deserve, given the challenges of that line of work upon which they have embarked, it needs to be very clear that they are accountable directly, that they can be cleared, that they can be supported, that they can be understood, so that we move beyond adversarial relationships. Therefore, it is my strong request, I strongly urge, that we create and support and adhere to a highly accountable process for maintaining a strong civilian review board that will make Pittsburgh continue to be a place that people flock to, that we want to bolster in all of its enterprises, a place that provides prosperity and democracy for all of its residents and visitors. I thank you.
I'm Mark Ozark. I'm from 536 Ardmore Boulevard in Wilkinsburg. Councilman Lavelle, I'd like to extend my sympathy on the passing of your grandfather and thank you very much for attending the meeting today. I am an observer for the Black and White Reunion of the Citizens Police Review Board, and my concern here is for the issue of CPRB appointments. I sent all of you an email yesterday, a piece I wrote that will not make it into the newspaper. I'm here to put on the record some of the points I tried to make in that piece about what this process looks like. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. The resistance of the city's executive branch to CPRB's right to G-20 security information and the announcement of CPRB replacements by the mayor just at the time of the board's hearing before Judge Weddick make it look like the mayor has enlisted in the longstanding FOP vendetta against any independent civilian review of the police. As a Black and White Reunion observer of CPRB, I've seen that vendetta at work, in the failure to obey CPRB subpoenas, the refusal to testify based on the spurious argument that the FOP contract does not require it, even though the Court of Common Pleas does require it, and the wearing of T-shirts in the St. Patrick's Day Parade supporting the beating of the officers who beat Jordan Miles. As I detailed in my email, based on my observations of CPRB and their meetings, that vendetta is both unwarranted and disgraceful. CPRB is highly supportive of good police. Council members were reportedly lobbied by the city law department to also join against the independence of CPRB. The reasons reported, apparently far-fetched financial threats from the G-20 Police Conduct Liability Insurance Company make it look like not only the FOP, but also and maybe primarily the insurance company, is pulling the strings of the mayor and the law department and would like to pull the strings of city council. The mayor's move to mark CPRB as his territory was both sad and improper on procedural grounds. It is on those procedural grounds that city council has the opportunity, just after Independence Day, to stand up for the independence of the CPRB and the independence of the legislative branch of government in Pittsburgh. I hope you will do so by tabling board appointments until a proper procedure is established clearly and is followed, and by encouraging CPRB to investigate police conduct to the fullest extent. The delay I'm requesting cannot do the mayor's stated purposes any harm. Despite the law department speaking and apparently defending the insurance company, it seems that really you have nothing to lose and the city has everything to gain. Thank you.
I wanted to make sure you all got this. Good morning. My name is Celeste Taylor. I reside at 7127 Thomas Boulevard, Pointe Breeze, Council District 9. What I am hoping you get to see is a proclamation that was presented to the Citizen Police Review Board in 2007. Could you please share that with the council people? Okay. I did have an opportunity to share with some of you that proclamation, that copy. And also, as you can see by all the people that are here today, once again, very diverse, passionate, caring people that want to see you do the right thing. And a couple of weeks ago, I sent you all a message, a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King, that the time is always right to do what is right. The nominees have not been our target, and I think that it's gotten twisted. You have already heard from very articulate, well-meaning people that really do understand what it means to have a good process. We're talking about accountability, transparency, independence, and effectiveness. That is what we want from our Citizen Police Review Board. A real document that was part of the campaign, and it's citizens, yes, for police accountability. I believe that you will do what is right. I don't think it's about individual council members. I think it's about a body, city council, understanding your role. And I do know that when we put this together, it wasn't all that clear. But now you have an opportunity to make it more clear. And you can decide which nominees are the best to be a part of one of the most important boards we have. It is different. And things are not always done properly. There have been times when you have voted to establish a commission and the mayor hasn't moved on it at all. As a citizen who was asked to be a part of a commission looking at the stimulus money so that we can really make sure that our city moves forward and that minorities and women are included in these opportunities, the mayor did not move on that commission at all. So I urge you to be together as a council and make sure you support the citizens and keep our Citizens Police Review Board independent and effective. Thank you.
My name is Edith Bell. I live at 5700 Duncan Hills Street, Department 503, in Highland Park, Pittsburgh. I walked in the peace march when the G-20 were here, and I was appalled at the overwhelming presence of military might, the likes of which I have not seen since growing up in Nazi Germany. And I wasn't surprised that the force was used indiscriminately at times. I also read the accounts of the attack on Miles Jordan, and I saw the pictures to prove what was done to him. So I'm speaking to express my concern that we may lose our great right to freedom if we let these kind of actions go by without making the perpetrators accountable. Our rights can be never the right without our noticing because we personally have not been affected. I like to quote Pastor Mimela, who was a German theologian who was opposed to Hitler when he survived the concentration camps, and afterwards said, "When they came for the socialists, I wasn't a socialist. I wouldn't do anything. And they came for the trade unionists, I didn't do anything because I wasn't a trade unionist. And they came for the Catholics, I didn't do anything because I wasn't Catholic. And they came for the Jews, I didn't do anything because I wasn't a Jew. And when they came for me, there was nobody to speak up." So I urge the civil council, I urge the civil council members to get involved, make sure that the Citizens Police Review Board can function as it is meant to be independently and well without the intervention of the mayor. And so bringing in new people at this point is counterproductive for the Citizens Review Board. Thank you.
My name is Casey Capitolo. I live at 5506 Margarita Street in Garfield East Liberty. Our condolences, Councilman Lavelle, from the community. As a number of the original founding people from the committee that put together the Citizen Police Review Board almost 15 years ago are in this room today, myself, Celeste Taylor, Pete Shell, among others, that's a testimony to your constituents and to our concern and love for our city and its well-being. Many of you know many of us. We didn't go away, we stay here. Last summer, in July, your Citizen Police Review Board and your constituents, under the good offices of Councilman Cross, then head of the Public Safety Committee, we came to you to offer a warning of the clear and present danger of what was likely to happen in Pittsburgh. Unfortunately for the city, that testimony is all public record now. And it did in fact happen. I accidentally was in Oakland on Friday night, complete accident, careperson of the Civil Liberties Committee, and saw a full-scale militarized assault carried Civil Liberties Committee, and saw a full-scale militarized assault carried out on our children at the most important economic institution in the region, the University of Pittsburgh. We have hundreds of witnesses, hundreds of films. There's not going to be any question that we're going to get those documents. The question that we are all here discussing with you, our colleagues and friends, is the fact that you are our voice. You are our representatives. It was not for nothing that we have three branches of government. The police are not under your jurisdiction, but we need to have your good work and an independent and strong Citizen Police Review Board. Unfortunately now, Pittsburgh is part of a chain of events. Since that day that I put on a suit and came down here to testify, I have been followed, listened on my phone, my classes at school interfered with, and my home visited by agents of Homeland Security who told me, and I'm just an overweight, middle-aged college student and soccer mom who lives in Pittsburgh, that I was now on a list for the rest of my life. I was not allowed to go into Canada in any way, shape, or form about the G-20, although all I did here was work on our constitutional rights. You are now part of that story. Pittsburgh is now part of that story. We have Denver, Minneapolis, Miami, Boston, Pittsburgh, and I just interviewed a young Pittsburgher last night who was in Toronto. They had between 10 and 20,000 police there, an overwhelming security presence that cost somewhere in the realm of a billion Canadian dollars. You are now part of that story. We cannot get out of it now. What happened, happened. You did your best for us on one level by not allowing those unconstitutional laws to be passed about preemptive arrests, which they did, in fact, pass in Toronto, and now they're going to be 100 years settling those lawsuits. We need your help here. We need an independent Police Review Board, and please keep it strong and independent. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us today. I'm Helen Gerhardt. I live at 5701 Stanton Avenue in Pittsburgh. My very sincere regrets for Mr. Ravel. I served in Iraq for over a year. As a soldier, I swore to uphold the Constitution, which means also following the Geneva Conventions, which our country ratified. As part of my service, I watched many members of my unit abuse the authority of the force that was given to them. What they called practical jerks would have been defined as theft, battery, and assault under the rule of law. I reported many of these incidents. I went first to my squad leader, then to my platoon leader, to my captain. When nothing was done, I went outside of my own unit. I went to a chaplain, a captain, asking for his intervention. I went to a first sergeant of another unit. Nothing was done. There was no system of review of accountability from outside that system. We were not policing ourselves. The Geneva Conventions had basically been set aside by our commander-in-chief at that point. There's a very long history of documentation of that process and the results for Iraqi citizens. Abuse became very common. On May 1st of 2004, the anniversary of my enlistment in the Army, I came back from a mission up north to Crete, the hometown of the man who used torture as the common force of what he called "war." I watched the news of Abu Ghraib come across the television screens that were being beamed across the world. My own unit delivered water to Abu Ghraib. We were part of a system in which there was no oversight. There must be oversight. There must be accountability. The CPRB in this city provides some protection. In my former work for the Council on American Islamic Obligations, I spoke with many immigrants who were very afraid to speak out for the kinds of abuses that they had suffered. There were only a very few exceptions that put themselves in the line to do so. These problems with police brutality affect Muslims, Latinos, blacks, all of us. So I urge you to retain a process which maintains accountability and justice. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council. Good morning to all of us. My name is Harvey Holtz. I live at 1914 Murray Avenue. Since I last left you, I've become a retired professor. Thank you. Thank you. As we have said, we've had two major events take place in Pittsburgh related to the police. One was the G-20, and the other was the beating of a young man by three very large policemen. In the first case, the second case, I'm sorry, this young man was not only beaten by these policemen, but the police department and the culture of the police justified that action. It was not simply a single action. They justified it with the T-shirts they wore, they justified it with their parade, they justified it with their commendations. These are not simply the actions of individuals, but this is the action of the management and the culture of the police force. Second, the G-20 is a bit different. It's different in that the responsibility is not only with the local police, but with the national homeland security. And this is something that's taken place in many parts of our country and elsewhere in the world. Here, we have an alien force coming down on this city. An alien force from outside, threatening not only the people who march, but everyone else, because this was practice for them. They're doing it all over the world. When things get tougher economically, you know they will. There's a way, they know what to do. So, my sense is, the council needed to act very swiftly as a result of these two events. Not swiftly to replace the people on the Citizen Police Review Board, make it impossible to make the case. That's tampering with justice. Not to ask the civilian Police Review Board to take their time to back up on the case till the suits came in. That, if it's affecting you personally, is a conflict of interest. What this body should have been doing, when these two of those events, you should have said, "Oh, my God, this is a threat to our city. We need to strengthen the Police Review Board." You should have given the Police Review Board the ability to indict. That's what you need to do. You need to strengthen this body, because we're all under threat nationally and locally. And don't think just because you're on council, you're not. We all are. We're protecting ourselves. Thank you.
Good morning. Kenneth Houston, 1835 Center Avenue. The community lives on for the Black Political Empowerment Project and Coalition Against Violence. And I'm here on behalf of the chairman, Mr. Tim Stevens. The problem with politics is, there's too much politicking. That's the problem with politics. We stand today to simply say to you, that there's an old saying my grandfather used to say, is that loyalty is the ability to keep commitment. Your elected officials, we understand your position. We understand the political process, if you will. But I think that, on behalf of the chairman, one of the things that we are so humbly appealing to you is that we understand that your powers are your powers, and you can't necessarily change everything, but you can make a difference. And you can speak to the people that elected you, that you're doing the best job that you were elected to do. The Citizens Police Review Board is extremely important, and it's extremely important not because necessarily that you want to say, "All police are bad," because that's not what it's about. I think that if you look at the history of the Citizens Police Review Board and under the direction of the lady that's in charge, I think it's been pretty fair. The position that we're asking you to take today is just be fair. Use the wisdom that God has given you to do what you think is right by the people of this great city. And no one can say, when you do that in fairness to your constituents, that you are wrong. No one can say that. The mayor is who he is. He's doing what he believes is right. We're saying to you as councilmen and council members, we need you to take a look at this and fix it. We don't know who fumbled the ball. The media says one thing, this one says one thing, emails are flying back and forth, everybody's saying, "Well, I didn't do it. Well, I didn't do it. He did it. She did it." It doesn't matter. Let's fix it. Whatever it is, so that you guys look better, the people feel better, and we're all in a great process of democracy. That's what it's about. No one is here to point the finger at any one of you. We understand somewhere along the line the ball got fumbled. Let's pick the ball up, and let's do it right. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers?
Yes. Hi. There's a few of us. Hello. Good morning. My name is Margaret Baco, and I live at 4133 Beanie Road, Pittsburgh, PA. And what this moment in time requires of all of us is that we have the courage to face what is true. And what I see is that we are all experiencing the threat of a continuation of the corruption of the ethics and values that real justice requires. What is clear to me is that the political strategies that are being exerted against the CPRB are obvious and amoral. What I am witnessing today in your faces as well is the way that you distract yourselves with your cell phones. What else is distracting you? There is the reality of undisciplined brutality within a professional body of policemen. This reality is a desperate truth that insists that all citizens have the responsibility to oppose this brutality in our police forces, as demonstrated in the militarization, in the militarization that we're seeing globally. And to demand an authentic accountability on the part of our City Council and our mayor to demonstrate behavior that would protect our civil liberties and our physical security, the CPRB as an oversight body protects our justice and our rights to protection, and it is an essential aspect of our protection and our rights that have ever been eroded by government bodies locally and globally. We have to stop this corrupt behavior and act with the authority of love that our lives demand. We are all witnesses to a greater truth, and we must all act to protect the integrity of life, not the position of the powers that may threaten our security. I beg you to live into the truth of this love that we have the responsibility to live into and to hold the Citizens Police Review Board in respect. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Peter Shell. I live on 5539 Raleigh Street in Square Hill. I'm the co-chair of the Thomas Merton Center Anti-War Committee. We organized the big march on Friday, September 25th, around the G-20 last summer, where several thousand people came out and marched. That was a legal and peaceful protest, as we had said it would be beforehand. We are concerned in the aftermath of the G-20 about the police misconduct that occurred, about the mass arrests that happened, and about the brutality that happened to peaceful protesters. We really need to find out the truth about what happened, and the CPRB is attempting to engage in a very important investigation to find out what happened around the policing around the G-20. It looks to me, it looks to many of us, like the mayor is engaging in an attempted cover-up around what happened around the G-20, especially when most of those mass arrests happened in Oakland on Friday evening after the G-20 was over, when the governmental leaders had left Pittsburgh. So what were the hundreds and hundreds of riot police doing in Pittsburgh on Friday evening after the G-20 was over? We need to find that out. So, we expect City Council to act as an independent checking balance on the power of the mayor. We ask you not to collaborate in this attempted cover-up. We ask the City Council to protect the independence and the integrity of the CPRB, and please do not change any of the numbers of the CPRB until after this investigation is over. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nigel Perry. I live at 4815 Kincaid in Pittsburgh. I'm an independent journalist. I've worked with Twin Cities Indie Media and with Pittsburgh Indie Media, and I'm not here speaking on behalf of either organization. As you know, we have the 2008 RNC in St. Paul, Minnesota, and I came to report for the G-20 as well. There's a pattern going on in America with these national special security events, where a bunch of federal monies thrown at the city for security in St. Paul, $50 million, here it ended up being about $26, I believe. And I think it has a corrupting influence on cities. I think it becomes a very destructive force in the city, and for years afterwards, activists and those who were present during the events deal with this aftermath. And here we are, coming up to eight or nine months after, and we're still dealing with this. And we'll be dealing with it through civil cases for about two years after the event. Jordan Miles was very upsetting. The G-20 was very upsetting. And the brutality insurance, which was built by the city, was very upsetting as well. In St. Paul, we had the same thing. The city tried to indemnify itself with an insurance policy, and of course, the police knew this. And the law of counsel that was stated a few weeks ago, to protect this insurance was one thing. I mean, it was kind of a shameful document. Like the insurance policy itself is shameful, you shouldn't be saying to the police, "Hey, don't worry about it. We're not going to have to pay for this." You know, police should feel accountable, and it's clear that in Pittsburgh, that there is a climate of impunity amongst the police. From the FOP's march during St. Patrick's Day, where they're celebrating three officers who clearly have no leg to stand on as far as Jordan Miles is concerned. I mean, there's no reason that three grown men would need to damage a human being that much, not an 18-year-old, 150-pound high school student. I'm here today along with a lot of people, and as many people would have been here today if we did not have jobs and things. And we're asking for the documents to be released. We're asking for the CPRB to be supported. We want to see its mandate extended to indictments. We want information. I mean, that's what this is all about. We need information and free access to information. And please do not stand in the way of us getting hold of that information, otherwise we won't know what happened. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rose. I'm an attorney with the ACLU of Pennsylvania. I work here in Pittsburgh. Our office is at 313 Atwood Street, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our many members who live in the city of Pittsburgh. I hope that you have all had a chance to review the June 25th letter that the ACLU sent to each of you, and I'm going to take this opportunity to briefly summarize a few key points from that letter. First, I just want to make it clear that this is about the process by which the nominations have been made, and not any of the individuals who have been nominated by the mayor to serve on the CPRB. As many of the people who have spoken here this morning have eloquently pointed out, the Citizens Police Review Board performs a very important oversight function for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. And the main reason that the CPRB is so effective and so credible as an agency is its independence. That independence is put at risk when... That independence is put at risk when there is no clear process for nominating new members of the board or removing members of the board whose terms have expired. At the very least, the code requires at least three nominations for each of the seats for which council is required to make nominations to be submitted to the mayor when there is a vacant seat. That has not been done in this situation. But even if it is done, it would destroy the code's provision for staggered terms of members on the CPRB. So the ACLU would urge that the council treat each member who is currently serving an expired term as if they had been renominated at the expiration of that term, and in the meantime, revise the code so that it clearly steps out the process, which it currently does not do, for removing members or reappointing them when their terms expire and replacing members whose terms have expired. We think that that's the best way to ensure that the independence of the CPRB is maintained and its effectiveness can continue.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Maureen Cross Bolden, president of Alleghanians, a member of BCPAP, Black and White Reunion, and associate pastor of St. John's Baptist Church. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning. I deem this extremely important. My tardiness was due to legal reasons, but I still pressed on to get here to address you, the stinging council people of Pittsburgh, who we have entrusted our best interests to. For the mayor, in all due respect to the mayor, whoever the mayor is, it's a conflict of interest for him to appoint the Citizens Police Review Board. The Citizens Police Review Board is established so that the citizens have a place to go to cry for help. Who is crying for help, Reverend Bolden? I've been to them twice, on two different occasions, for two different grandsons who are both black. The one, the police put a gun to his head, and I was in Detroit at a conference, and his mother called me crying, and yes, I got back, God brought me safely. And we took him to the hospital and had him examined. And the doctor's reports proved that he had been beaten up. The police have this way of beating you up and doing you in, and you look wonderful. I asked the doctor, "What's the difference in a bruise and contusion?" Because what you're telling me is not the way he's looking to me, but the way he's acting to me is what you're telling me. He said, "The contusions are under the skin, and it's bruised, and you can't see it." The trauma of a young man with a gun at his head and sworn at, "St. I will blow your F hand off," who happened to be a passenger in a car. They were drag racing. Now, I know you're not supposed to drag race, but I dare say each and every one of you or most of you know someone who did. I used to date a guy. I didn't drag race, but I was with my friend and his brother-in-law drag racing. Yeah, we drag raced. That's stuff young people do. But he made the mistake of riding in a brand-new car that was white on an all-star at night. When we drag race, we drag race down in freedom, broad daylight, never got pulled over once. So I just say to you, in all fairness, in all sympathy, if we're going to have a Citizens Police Review Board, let it be for the citizens, not for the mayor, to put in who he wants, because he's already in charge of the police force. God bless you. Thank you.
My name is Lizzy Roberts. I live at 234 East Loxborough in Mon Hall. I had lifted weights for 21 years, and somebody showed me a picture one day, and I didn't realize who it was because I never sat there and looked at it. But one of the police officers was a karate instructor, also looked as though he lifted weights. Three men of 200 pounds each, and with a karate instructor, there's no way in the world that it should have taken that much force, because he didn't get beat, he got pummeled. There's no way in the world that that man's face deserved to be that brutally beat, hair ripped out of his head. I also have braids, and I know how hard it is to yank them out. He was walking down the street at 11 o'clock to go to his grandmother. Anybody who lives in the city or lives anywhere, you can notice that when the ones that are going to be doing something wrong usually walk in groups of four or five or more. 11 o'clock, one young man walking down the street was not a threat to anybody. Supposedly, he was tasered, which I've seen enough times and has brought somebody down. Why didn't 150-pound person get put down when he was tailored? I'm sorry, but if three people jumped out of an unmarked car, there's no way in hell, excuse my French, that I still would have been standing there looking at somebody that I didn't know who they were, especially in a neighborhood that there's a lot of drug things going on, there's guns. So, I mean, come on, let's be real. And, I mean, it was ridiculous. Like I said, I lifted weights for 21 years, and I asked one of my friends who is also a police officer, and I said, "Well, if that's what they did to a 150-pound person, what would they have done to me?" And he put his head down, and I said, "Shoot me." And he said, "Possibly." So let's make it real. It's not just bad in the black neighborhoods. We've got an awful lot of white kids that do an awful lot of things, but isn't it amazing? When you've got the money, it's amazing how it goes away. I was watching a program last night where there was five people that had gotten to a discussion with a young man and beat him, and he ended up died. One of them was accused of the actual beating. These were five guys that walked together in a gang-like situation. The judge said that they weren't a gang. Hmm, amazing, they just happened to be white.
Good morning. My name is Renelda, and I represent the Northside Coalition for Fair Housing, and we represent 333 Section 8 residents who live in the north side of Pittsburgh. The people that live in our properties are mostly--
Address, Renal, please.
Oh, my address, 2317 Osgood Street, 10214. NCFAs represents mostly poor, black women, but women don't exist in isolation, so certainly there's men. And I need to say that we represent the people who ain't always functioning at a level where they understand how to represent themselves, or where they can afford to represent themselves. And everybody knows that in this society, to have real justice, you have to have real money. And that's something that the families that I represent just don't have. Over 4,000 complaints justifies to me the need for the Police Review Board. I also want to say to all of you that this is just like an amazing time, and if this can't happen right with this council, you know what I mean, it can't ever happen. Because I trust that, I mean, you guys are there for a reason, and a lot of things are changing, and I just believe in you guys, and I believe that you'll see the benefit of this. We ask that CPRB nominations be tabled until we have a transparent and proper nomination Nobody can just run rampant and not be checked. I mean, every four years, you guys got to be checked by the people that vote for you. So there is, I have to be checked. I got a board of directors that when I do something that they don't like, they certainly check me. You know, what happened to for the people, by the people? You know what I mean? And I'm saying that the public, the Citizens Review Board should be inclusive of participation by the citizens, and that, you know, we actually don't need, we do have the capacity as civilized individuals to choose who we need, just like we chose you to check another public entity.
My name is Jonah McCallister Erickson. I live at 317 South Pacific Avenue in the Friendship Neighborhood. The question of this reappointment or appointment of new members of the Citizens Police Review Board is one of those gut-check moments. It really raises the question of, will council be independent? Will council speak for the people of Pittsburgh who overwhelmingly supported the creation of an independent police review board? Or will they be the lapdogs of the mayor's office? Right now, the current board is pursuing two very unpopular investigations, two investigations that the mayor's office and the police department and the paternal police have been trying to shut down, have been stonewalling on. Will the council stand with the people or with the mayor? That's the question we face today. Will they have a transparent, clear nomination process that is beyond reproach, or will they call into question the very effectiveness of this body and will there be some accusations of cover-ups and conspiracy? I hope not. I would urge the council to reappoint the current members of the Citizen Police Review Board, and if that's not something that you think is possible, to have a clear and transparent nomination process where the nominees are brought before council in a form of a resolution that is then presented to the mayor so that we can all see what's happening, the people can see what's happening, instead of a behind-the-scenes process with a few emails going back and forth between council members that's, well, frankly, less than transparent. And I know it's been used in the past for boards, but bad process in the past is no reason to have bad process now, particularly on such an important, independent oversight board. Again, I urge you to reappoint the current members of the Citizen Police Review Board, and if that's not possible, to have a real hearing and real nominations, let the people of Pittsburgh really see what's going on and be a true cooperative branch of government. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Dana Harris-Lance, and I live at 7123 Penn Avenue, Pointe Blaise. This is a new process for me. I've been to a few of these own meetings, and so I'm new to this, but one thing that I'm not new to is police violence in the black community, or in the poor, underserved communities, which could be Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, a lot of other areas. I know a lot of people from different ethnic groups, and we all have the same cries, and the cries are for our youth to be protected, for our youth to be able to walk the street and have opportunities. What I'm seeing is the Police Review Board is very important in sustaining safety for our citizens. I watch the news, I'm very savvy when it comes to internet searches, and do we want an Oscar-grant situation here in our city? I think not. And I think that Jordan Miles is close enough to an Oscar-grant situation, and well too close to that. I think it's important for us to support you as you are representing our communities, and I do support you, and the people that I know do support you. So we are here to hold you up to do the jobs that we ask of you, that would be to ask, to table this until a process can be implemented that would be proper and just. I think that too many times we are held by dogmas, and we're held by political ties, maybe, we're held by favors, we're held by cronyism and things of that nature, but I think that you, as people who represent us, supersede all of those things, and I think that you have the courage enough to do that. I think you will have the support from the community to do that. My cries are for injustice that prevails all too much, and we're living close enough to a police state, but I think what Pittsburgh can do right now with your support in making this a transparent process is stand as maybe even a beacon of hope for other cities to look at what are we doing here in Pittsburgh, the most livable city, where we have the G20 situation, where we have black poverty that is underspoken in the media, where we have deplorable city conditions in inner-city communities such as Homewood, where I'm from. And we can be, with the help of you, a beacon of hope and light. I do believe that. I believe in you. I believe in the process, but I only believe in the process when it's transparent and when the citizens are listened to. Thank you.
Priscilla Wahafdeek, 7514 Kensington Street, Pittsburgh. First of all, I'd like to tell Councilman Abell how very, very sad we are about Phil Osmond's grandpa. Everybody has been very eloquent, so the only thing I wanted to say was the importance of trust. If this Citizens Review Board that the mayor is proposing goes forward, after everything that's been said today, where is the trust in that organization by the people? And I think council needs to think about that.
Good morning. My name's Kenneth Miller. I live at 708 North Taylor Avenue. I think it's, I'm very concerned that the mayor's office, first of all, hasn't released the OMI report on Jordan Miles. As soon as, you know, people started coming and the Jordan Miles case was being publicized, the mayor's first response was to promise accountability and transparency. I mean, he was right out there saying that he was going to put this OMI report on the fast track, and then it disappears. I mean, it's just gone. I mean, he promised. That's how he soothe everybody's nerves, and he just, he just didn't do that. And then he comes to you and starts making requests about the G20, you know, "Please stand up against transparency with the G20, and here are my new CPRB appointments." Did anyone ask him about the OMI report about Jordan Miles? I mean, isn't that sort of first on the agenda when it comes to what the mayor should be doing about police brutality? That's a big problem. There's every reason, the people in this room have every reason to believe that Luke Reaganstall is working hard to undermine Citizen Police Review of the Police. There is a pattern here, and it's very clear, and we need you to put, demanding that OMI report from the mayor's office first on the agenda before you deal with anything else. Where is the OMI report about Jordan Miles? We're going to find that justice for Jordan Miles means that these police are going to go to jail, and that'll be great. That'll be Citizen Police Review. That'll be like what shows the police department that this isn't going to go on indefinitely. That'll be great. I'm excited about those police going to jail. Thank you very much.
How you doing? My name is Paradise Gray. I live on the north side of Pittsburgh. I came here to talk about the Citizen Police Review Board, and, you know, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't, you know, know all the ins and outs of legislation and everything, and hopefully we trust that to you, that you understand the things that we don't. One thing I do understand is that the young people in Pittsburgh, whose voice is never heard, is crying out. Every time I look in the media, there's something about stop smearing and the lack of transparency, and everybody's mad at the black community because we don't give up our sons, our daughters, our uncles, our fathers, who may live a life of crime. Where's the fairness? There's never been a police officer go to jail for brutalizing or even killing a person from our community, ever, in the history of the city of Pittsburgh. I just want to remind people that the Review Board is not here to protect the cops. They already have OMI number, they have what? They have OMI, they have FOP number one, and I don't know what kind of gun they have to your heads, but there's a gun pointed at our heads every single day, whether we're a 12-year-old like Michael Ellevie, whether we're seven-- a twelve-year-old like Michael Ellerby, whether we're seven-years-old like Pamela Lawton's daughter. You know, we had a judge in the justice system say that it was impossible, what did he use? What kind of word did he use? He said it was improbable, impossible, whatever, that a Pittsburgh police officer could put a gun to a seven-year-old head. He wasn't there. That's the kind of trust we have in our police department. My community doesn't trust the police department like that. You know what I'm saying? And we don't, you know, the police are in the catch twenty-two. We don't want to say all police are bad, but we get treated like all of us are bad. You know, all of us are bad. All of us are criminals. Police officers look at us, they look at us like we've done something and we've done nothing. They look at you like, "I don't know what you did, but I'm going to get you for it one of these days." We need accountability. We need to be able to support the police department. We need better police surveillance relations. We need situations like what Reverend Burgess is trying to do in Homewood, to clean up the crime, but we have to start with the people who are trusted and paid to clean it up. We have to clean them up first. We have to be able to trust them in order for people in my community to step forward and say, "You know what? This person committed this crime. I'm going to testify." There's no protections for people in my community. The police cannot protect them, and the people don't trust the police. We have to get an independent board so that the people can trust the police and we can go forward as citizens of this city together.
Good morning. My name is Melvin Pollard. I live in Pittsburgh, one-five-two, one-five-two-two-seven. I just want to piggyback on what Paradise said. As we stand here, first and foremost, I think that you've got some of the greatest representatives of our community standing here. You have the stakeholders, you have those that are law-abiding, peace-loving, those that want to help you to make a difference, make the right decisions in this city. You are our representatives. You are the ones that we've chosen to be our mouthpiece, to be our voice, to carry our water. We're looking for you to do what is right by us as a community. As Paradise said, it's hard for us sometimes to understand when it's dealing with the police department. You know, there's a bad history between the police department and particularly the African-American community. There is some mistrust. But see, we can go back with mistrust based on facts. We can go back to mistrust based on things like the Tastiggi experiment. So we just don't come up with these things like because we don't like you. We come up with these things because there's precedence to make us feel that way. There's precedence to Jordan Miles because it was Johnny Ginnage, and then there was, you know, in California, you had Rodney King. There's things that happen sequentially in our community that makes us go, "Oh, here we go again." It's not that we don't like the police. We like, don't like bad policing that thinks in our community is just collateral damage, not to the point that they even feel that they owe us apology, a simple apology. "Man, we got the wrong person. We're sorry. We don't owe you that. You should thank God we're in your community trying to help you." So there's this whole mindset that we're trying to change. It's not bad policing, and as he said, you look for our community to tell those that are bad in our community to help you, get them off the streets, but I ain't even heard anything yet about internal affairs, police internal affairs. Where is the internal affairs department? What kind of reports do they have on that? Or do Pittsburgh have any bad police? So we don't even need them. So see, these are the questions that we ask. This country was built, came from England, a whole historical plan, because they wanted to put in force checking dollars. You can't have a police department that is omitted from being checked because they don't do anything wrong, because they do, and when they are wrong, they have to be checked. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.